Good evening, good evening. Good evening all of you.
Good evening sir.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, good evening. Good evening, welcome, welcome. Yeah, some more, some more people are joining, good, good evening.
That will be done, fifty percent manually, fifty percent automatic also. Because there are some cases where some candidates have scored fifty nine point ninety eight marks. So maybe Robo.
All the calculations will be done by the representatives from the bank, they can give our documents.
Thank you, any other points you would like to say? Otherwise you also come for today, nine o'clock, today one thing.
Yeah, anybody, people are coming, yeah. Hello. Yeah, come on. All of you, come, 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 come. Why is for, acha, yeah, I am having phone only, why sound is not coming? Swapnali Kadam, apne baat kar liji, baat kiji. Swapnali Kadam.
Yes sir.
Oh, acha, now the sound etc is good, very good, excellent. So now we can start because we are running short of time. Those who have attended the interview today, please raise your hand so that I can call you one by one. Those who have attended. While, while document uploading, whether we need to upload resume or not, no. I don't think it is required, but let us see, GRS, let him come, they will tell us. I don't think you are required to load that one, so Swarnim Raut, please speak.
Hello sir.
Yeah, welcome.
Yes sir, so my topic was that you got placed into your dream company after doing MBA and versus the family business. So, so sir, actually what happened was that in that one girl was there. She did not read the question properly and she thought that it is MBA versus family. So she went on with like giving benefits of the MBA. So I think she might have gotten excited that she got same question, but it was a little bit different. So I will request others to please like read the question properly, they might change a little bit.
Acha, in your case it was a dream job, correct?
Yeah, dream job after MBA.
After MBA, see that is why, don't presume any question, please go through the question thoroughly. Sometimes questions may be repeated, but even then whatever questions I am presenting you here, they are not complete. Whatever candidate sent only, I am putting, so please go through the questions correctly. Thank you Swarnim, how did you do it, have you been selected?
Yes sir, selected sir.
Oh, congrats, what was the robotic topic?
Sir, your role model and how will you organize things in this bank?
Acha, how will you organize things, matrap?
Yeah, means like it was related to multitasking sir, how will you manage the projects in, like how will you handle multiple projects?
Super.
It was related to this multitasking.
Very good, next, who, who, next anybody else, come on quick, raise your hands, all of you, one by one. So that I can ask if there is anybody who has attended the. In GD, if there is nobody, then I will take some topic and tell you because some people have given some ideas. Yeah, Nirmal, Nirmal is coming, come on, yeah, there is nobody was attended the session today GD. GD, anybody has attended GD today, boys, girls, itna, so many people went, nobody has come, oh ho. It's okay, the topics that were given today, some people have sent to me, I will share them with you. Share the screen, GD questions, yeah, hmm, yeah. Rani Baby. Rani Baby, can you read the question number ten? Rani Baby.
Hi sir.
Yeah.
You are working in a MNC for the last ten years, you are getting an offer from the computer company offering fifty percent hiking salary, what will you do?
So this was one question given, then next one, please read this also, number. Ah, same, same question I have repeated twice, huh, oh ho, it's okay, doesn't matter, go to eight. Number eight, question number eight, please read, Rani.
There is a public sector company in employee are lazy and not doing work. The vice president asked the manager, the present manager said that employee demands for salary hike and feel boredom. What vice president should do and who is the faulty?
Acha, acha, there is a public sector company, the candidate has typed wrongly. An employee, an employee, as you are lazy, nayaiga, he is lazy. An employee is lazy, English galti, and is not doing work. Full stop, comma, candidates, when you send the questions, you please see properly, once, twice, I am just posting it here, good. So this, the question is like this, there is a public sector company, an employee is lazy and is not doing work. The vice president is asking the manager the reason why the employee is like that. The manager has told that the employee is asking for a salary hike. What should the vice president do, vice president cannot give any extra salary to any one person or two persons. It is all done for all the people together, okay, so that's right, next we will ask Mr. Dini, Dini, are you there? Dini.
Yes sir, I am there.
Dini, question number seven ko padliji.
Topic, you had to job, you had to job.
No, no, spelling mistake.
Okay sir. You had two job offers on hand, one offer is from a lending corp, leading corporate company. In salary package and the salary package is very attractive, however, the nature of work is such that you really does not have too much love to learn or improve the skills. And the other offer is from a startup company, but there is an excellent scope for showcasing your talent.
Acha, acha, topic, you have two job offers on hand, full stop, I think I have to correct all the questions. One offer is from a leading corporate company. And. And the salary package. And the salary package is very attractive, full stop. However, the nature of work is such that you really do not have. You really do not have too much love to learn or improve the skills. Full stop. The other. The other. Job. The other offer. Um, other offer is from startup company where there is excellent scope for showcasing your talent. Okay, good. Now this is the question, very good, anybody else is present now, who has attended today session? Yes please, anybody, nobody. Kya hua? Whatever, nobody is there who has attended the session today at nine P, I mean today, throughout today, nobody. Aha, very bad, aisa bhi nahi ho raha chahiye, then I have to share next question only. Yeah, let me share the next question. Yeah, next question, oh, why I am typing again and again, how it is happening, some mistake. Because I have typed once, but the question has come two times. It's okay. Then, this is what we studied yesterday, excess capital, why has knowledge, is it as marketing skills? You are going to start a company, what will you do, so this is okay. Now anybody has any doubts regarding how to answer these questions? Not only this question, but also any other question, would you like to say? I have given all the questions I have as on date in the GD material given to you. And so any doubts you are having, please, anybody? No doubt.
Sir, can you explain a solution that we can offer for question number five?
Question number five, acha.
Yes sir.
Just a minute, oh, yesterday we discussed that, nah, excess capital.
Yes sir, but I wasn't there, I wasn't there, that's right.
Why has my, my, knowledge, is it as marketing? You are going to start a company, so this answer can be answered from, this question can be answered from anyone, and that we can also take it up, come on. Some candidates who were present yesterday are there, come on, please answer the question, boys, girls, come on. Yeah, here is an opportunity, good evening, yeah.
My, my name is Sanju Sharma from Ranchi, Jharkhand. My opinion, I will choose Mr. Y, who is knowledgeable because when he start a startup. First essential thing which we need is funding. So if I choose the knowledgeable person, I will be able to bring funds to my company because there are a lot of matter. To which nowadays we can bring funds in our company, just like.
Hmm. Kya hua, suddenly stop ho gaya?
Yes, just like Shark Tank and other guy start, help to start up the company.
Hmm, but knowledge is very much important, that's what you want to say?
Okay, thank you sir.
No, no, that is what you wanted to say, aapki suddenly stop kar diya, aisa nahi kar na hi, be careful, okay?
Okay sir.
Yeah, next anybody else would like to speak?
Uh, sir, good evening sir, my name is Dina.
Yeah.
So in this situation, I will choose Mr. Y, who is knowledgeable person, because in present scenario, there are lot of methods to which we can get capital. Especially there are even the government is supporting startups by various schemes. So if we are able to pitch our idea in a good manner, we can get a capital from initial capital in order to start a startup. And after that, using that fund itself, we can use a portion of that fund in order to market the product or the service that we are developing. And in this way, we can, what you call, bring our startup up. So definitely, we needed knowledgeable person in order to get the capital as well as to get the company running in the initial state. So I will choose the person Y, who is knowledgeable.
Okay, Dixsha, Dixsha. Dixsha please. Dixsha, Dixsha is not there, Vinayya, Vinayya today.
I would like to speak.
Yeah, today internet is okay, please speak.
Swapnali here sir.
Swapnali, please speak.
Yes sir, so I would like to choose Z here, who has the marketing skill because first of all, I won't start a company without having the basic knowledge. So by gaining all, gaining all the now knowledge I need, only then I will have the gut to start a company. So after I start a company, the most important thing is I need a person to market my product properly. So funds can come quickly and easily, so if a person is good at marketing, he can bring customers, he can bring capital, he can bring investors. And he can bring really good, you know, growth for the company, so I feel that a marketing person is much more important.
Yeah, but one.
Because I would have the, I would have the knowledge to start the company, without that knowledge, I would never start a company.
But one thing I have noticed is that, questions are not repeated on the next day. Whatever questions they have asked yesterday, not much has come except that rural and semi-urban service, I think it has come for somebody. Um, in one case it was a bank, in another case, maybe some other wording, rural and semi-urban, that sort of question was there. So they don't repeat very much the same question, please go through the question properly, understand, just as Swarnim Raut told initially. And regarding this question, as I told you, you can analyze from any angle. If I want to choose X, then I will say, I possess the required knowledge in this field. And I have also studied MBA, so I am good in marketing. And so right now what I need is only the capital, I have some money, but that is not sufficient. So I would be happy to have another person X with capital. Supposing I want to say, I have already arranged for funds and so there is no problem for that. Whereas now I need somebody with the knowledge more particularly about, not that I do not have knowledge, with knowledge only I started this. But then a person with the deep knowledge in this regard may be really helpful for me to improve the business. So I want a person with the knowledge, why? Supposing it is going to be other way about, see, I started this business only with the amount of capital I raised from my family and others. And I also have certain idea about how we have to proceed in this. So I don't think any, there is any need for capital and also this knowledge. I will go for a guy who has been very successful in say selling or marketing. So I will take Mr. Isad, that is how we can manage, okay, good, now we will take.
Sir, I have a doubt, for the GD topic called, like if we are selected for a banker company and we are posted in urban or rural. So what points can we say for urban and what can be said for rural, like I have a doubt with that.
Please tell all of you.
People say like in, like infrastructure, facility, all that, but in rural also, like bank do not, do not need much infrastructure or this or that, they need customers. So that we will get in rural also notes, then why do people say that and what to present like that, that's my doubt.
No, you tell me, now what is your, yeah.
Sir.
Tell me.
The, it's me Dina, so as a beginner, as a beginner, I would always look forward for getting good experience. So in a good experience in the sense, in a city, definitely the business of the bank will be very high. Because majority of the companies will be situated in cities, so definitely there will be more business that would be happening. And this will help me to gain more knowledge in the field of banking. And there will be more experienced staff in the, in banks and cities, because there is, there is more huge business that will be taking place. So definitely I will be able to learn a lot from my seniors, so I will choose urban posting.
Okay, next, Swarnim, Swapnali, please tell, tell, what is your idea?
Like I am really confused sir, because I think both side is almost like there is, I don't know sir, that's why I asked a doubt.
Hello Baba, do ladka, listen, do ladka aata hai shaadi karne ke liye, aap to yeh ki select karna hai. Acha, tab toh bariya, it's good, I can talk openly, no problem. So, so how did you decide about this, your person, is he sitting beside you now?
No, no, he is watching TV inside.
Now what made you select this person as your husband?
So the thing is sir, coming from a village place, like from village side, I am from a village in Satara. So the thinking mentality of the people are so different, like women's are not considered equal. They have to follow the unwanted superstitions and rituals, which I don't like myself to follow. Because I was born and brought up in Kerala, in Calicut.
Hmm.
I have done my studies also over there only, so I don't believe in such superstition or anything like that.
Hmm.
And when I thought of a person, I thought he should give me the independence, he should consider my thoughts, he should consider me as equal as him. Respect me first of all, the first and my most important thing is respect.
Hmm.
Yeah, so all this quality I just judge in him and I thought he is perfect, yeah.
Very good, what is he now?
He is an software developer.
Oh, super, software developer has no time to talk to you, he will.
I think like that, he finds time for me.
He will be sitting before the computer or what is that, this useless one, like that, there is no time for boys or girls. You know, I have seen, even I am not having time in seventy year, three year, you know, that's okay, fine. Now come to this topic, which one will you choose, would you like to go to urban or rural?
Um, I would like to go to rural side, because in urban, according to me in urban, actually, there will be a lot of competition. The students who get selected there, who means get an opportunity to go in the urban side would be the best of the best.
Hmm.
And if I go to rural, I can actually show, you know, be there and I can, you know, work and bring prosperity to the village. I can, you know, spread lot of schemes and I can earn lot of, you know, profit for the bank from the people, not in a negative way, in a better way, they want to, not possibly. Also I can shine there and I can get promoted also.
Okay, good, we will go to somebody else who raised the hand, Rani Baby, please tell. Rani Baby. Rani Baby, yeah, yeah, please speak.
I think I will choose the urban posting. And since in that region, I will get more experiences as there will be, as they will be busy with work. And I can share my. I'm not getting so.
So you should not struggle like this, Anthony. Anthony please. Mary, Anthony.
Yes sir, Marli, Marliina Anthony, that's my name sir.
Yeah, please.
Yes sir, yeah, okay, thank you sir. Good evening friends, I will go for opting an urban posting, the reason is nothing but, I was born and brought up in Kochi, which is a city. So I am very much familiar with a city and its facilities. And we all know urban area will be very much developed in various aspects like infrastructure, transportation, communication etc. So the way, I mean, the, the convenience or ease of life is much higher in case of metropolitan cities. And I have already told you that I was born and brought up in Kochi. So it will be easier for me to accept and follow the facilities that we have over cities. And the other point is that the career growth opportunities are very higher in cities when we compare it with that of rural area. So that is the other point that I'll, that, that will make me go for opting, the second option, that is for getting a post in urban area, these are my points sir.
Okay, good, next is Marin Francis. Marin Francis. Marin Francis, where are you? Soumin Saban.
Ah, yes sir.
Yeah.
Good evening sir.
You are Soumin?
Ah, yes sir.
Yeah.
Sir, uh, by looking at bank's perspective and, and my perspective, and I would like to choose rural areas. Because in bank's perspective, the bank is trying to reach out to the rural area in order to bring banking and bring money to the rural people's hand. So in that way, the rural area will be enhanced with money and if they have the money and the money lending and money borrowing, if, if it happens means then rural areas will be enhanced. And by looking at, in my perspective, for me, the rural area would be a perfect, perfect job field. Because I live in a rural area and I know the rural people and how they are managing their lives. So in my perspective also, I could do my best in rural area and in rural area.
Are, are bhai bar bar ye same point ko repeat karte hain kyu? Bar bar yeh ki point, bar bar bar, but, 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 so what is the fun? Ek bar bolne se ho jayega, seeda bol do, samje?
Yes sir, yes sir.
Sunke thoda bore lag gaya. Um, you should keep this point in mind, you should speak briefly and to the point, understand? Up, see you are not confident, that is why you are telling the same point, rural, 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 semi-rural likewise. Tell one, two, three, four sentences, fine. Abhi try karu, abhi try karu, four sentences only, you must speak and you must speak everything important. First sentence, first sentence.
In bank's perspective, the rural area, the working in rural areas, choosing rural areas is the, is there, is their focus because.
They go, they go, they go, they go, in this one sentence, kitna struggle kar diya apni, bolo. This one sentence only you made, isme itna struggle kyun kar rahe hain, simple baat bolo na, kya swab bolna chahte hain, bolo. Kya bolna chahte, Hindi mein bolo na, which is your language?
Sir, Malayalam sir.
Malayalam, Malayalam pariyon, enna solonu?
Sir, I will tell in English sir.
Yeah, tell, tell.
Sir, the bank is trying to reach out to more people. So the rural people are the people who are struggling without the banking opportunities. So I have to try to go to rural area to do the banking job. This is the bank's perspective, so in my perspective.
Sorry, four sentences over, you have not given any, even one valid point. The question was, why do you want to go to rural area? You could have simply told, I was born in a rural area, I like rural living, I want to go to rural area. Number two, people in rural areas, they respect each other, as a banker, I will get more respect, I want to go to rural areas. I like serving in rural area of bank because I, I'll be, there will be only less number of people and I will get more opportunities to learn different aspects of bank. Okay, Soumin.
Yes sir.
Ah, ah, practice karlo.
Yes sir.
Yeah, don't think I am telling you mistake, but that is what it is, okay, next swap. Who's phone is on, please switch it off, mic off kardo, all of you switch off the mic. I don't know.
Great, Swapnali. Shall I speak?
The whis, whose mic is on, so that so much of confusion. Acha, now space, please, who is, who wants to speak now?
Sir, I am Swapnil.
Swapnil, please speak.
Yeah, good evening one and all, so for today's topic, I would use urban posting for me, because I was born and brought up in an urban setup. That will be more comfortable and convenient for me. And I think the technological advancement which will be taking place, it will be easily amended in an urban setup. Means like it will be fastly amended than in a rural setup. And my market population of the business will be also more in urban setup so that I can pitch them my products and they will be understanding it very easily. So selling will be also fruitful over here in the urban area. Coming to the transportation part means like if I want to visit my client or, or come from my home to the bank. The transportation facility that I will be getting in the urban area will be quite more easy in comparison to rural area. And for example, if there is an internet breakdown in the urban area, I can get it rectified within no time. But in rural area, as per me, it will be taking time and internet is one of the most.
Sufficient, 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 aree bhai, how it goes, you know, a speaker was asked to speak about football. All of you listen, a speaker was asked to speak about football, he prepared about football and all that. And when he went to the speech, that auditorium, he was told, sir, sir, the previous speaker has already spoken about football. So, sorry sir, please speak about a crow. Or, he was told, please speak about a crow. Then this fellow said, good evening gentlemen, now I am going to speak about the crow. There was a crow which flew very high and sat on top of a coconut tree. And from the coconut tree, it was looking on the ground. There the people were playing football, football is a game, some, so many people have to play, football is a ground like this, football size is this much. You have to put goal like that, he started talking about football. Aisa to, jo point bolna hai, uska bolne ka badla, aapne to dusra ka point bolne se kaise lagega, batao, Swapnil, aapko bhi bolte hain, samajh gaya? Seeda baat bolo na, bas, seeda baat bolo, bas, so why do you, why do you want? So why do you, why do you want, why do you want urban, abhi five sentences main bolo?
I want urban because I was born in an urban setup and I find it to be more convenient for.
Okay, best, next.
Yeah, so when the internet gets breakdown in my bank setup, I can easily get it rectified.
Okay, next third.
Third, a transportation facility will be more easy for me finding a transportation facility.
Okay, next, next.
Pitching a product to the customer will be more easier as they are already familiar with the products.
Okay.
The technological advancement, the software which we are going to get, like it can be easily installed first in the urban setup rather than in the rural setup.
The fifth point is irrelevant because you are repeating the second point you told her. Second, you have not at all linked about you are serving in the bank. Apni to bolna tha, harama arbat me kam karne se to humko bahut kuchh opportunities milega. Not only deposit advance but also foreign exchange, ye sab kaam hum sikh sak, sikh sakte hain. Isse wajah se humko knowledge badh jayega, ye kyun nai bataya? Aisa mapi, important point be told, otherwise, okay, you talked, okay, but kindly, which date is your G D?
Sir, tomorrow ten thirty.
Oh, Baba, you are getting the blessings from all of us. Thoda ye point ke man me rakke, badia point bolo, ek ek sentence bolne se. Usko sunke, unko bilkul acha point mala mala bolna hai.
Okay, sir.
Ah, so don't mistake, Swapnil, what is your degree?
M B A in finance and marketing.
Ye to problem hai, M B A finance padne wala, bahut kuchh padte hain, M B A padte hain, char padte hain, marketing padte hain. Kuchh ko bhi acha se nai padte hain. That is the problem, anyway, doesn't matter, I am just making fun, every day I have been very nice to you, today I am strictly harsh. So that we will learn from this, agreed?
Yes, yes, I take it as a positive, man and woman.
Good, I wish, yeah, next, who has to speak?
Can I speak?
Yeah, please speak, what, no fun, yeah.
Actually, one question you posted just before, I had been working in M N C for past ten years. Suddenly I got an offer, my competitive company is offering fifty percent salary hike.
Sir, what is the answer, what is the answer you will give for this?
I will answer, I will choose for, I will try to stay in that company which I am working in, that. Company which is for working last ten years, but my doubt is that. If I am saying about the fifty percent hike, if I have the tendency to shift the company, will it affect?
There is nothing wrong, are you, bye, no, no, no.
Everyone has a tendency to support the M N C which is working last ten years.
No, no, not necessary, because I will say, I won't like to continue in the same company because. Even if I am going to company after one year, if the company wants to send me out, they will send me out without any notice. So where is the question of loyalty and all, that all that has gone now. Right now is a stage where people have to take care of their career and if I get a job offer for fifty percent hike, sure I will jump. Nothing wrong, nothing. No, no, but the question is, you think the person who is conducting G D will think you will go away from federal bank. He has got no worry about that because he will get hundreds of people, he will send out fifty people, it's not a problem. But he wants to know whether you can speak correctly, whether you can influence others correctly, understand? Whatever you want to say, you say, if you want to say, I want to continue in the same company, I would like to come join, continue in the same company. Because this company has been entertaining me for ten years and has been giving me regular salary increase. And I am more comfortable in the way the people work here, they are also more comfortable. So I may like to continue to work in this company, I don't mind about any salary increase. I am more happy in my person placement, okay?
Okay, sir, the reason I am asking while discussing G D, everyone like to favor the safe way, like. Nobody want to take risk like that.
No, no, but in banking, you, we want people who can take risk. Array, I am going to make you manager, if you refrain from giving advance, you say I don't want to take risk, what is the fun of recruiting you? So you must take risk, but what type of risk? Reasonable risk you have to take, you should not take unreasonable risk. Samajh gaya aapko?
Okay, sir, better answer for that hike.
Ah, I, I, you can choose any way, both are okay. But try to tell some few sentences in favor of your stand.
Sir, can I get a good answer for that fifty percent hike?
You, that's what I told you, I would, I I may choose to go for a new company because a new company is offering fifty percent increase. And and fifty percent salary increase. And even if I am going to continue in the present company, there are no, there is no guarantee, I will be retained for all years to come. I may be sent out anytime, so it is better for me to go to the new company, try to learn the culture in that company. requisites of that company so that I can improve my career in further. And again, only in interview situations, it has happened so far, a man has switched five banks so far. And he came for this Bank of Maharashtra interview and he was asked, or S B I C B O interview. And he was asked, Harry, what happened, you have been going on changing from one to another, another, so why? So very rarely, when you jump from so many companies only, they will ask. First jump, second jump is not a big issue at all, so you can support your argument, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, anybody else would like to speak next, Vidaya? Yeah, yeah, anybody, explain.
It is Teegur Singh.
Yeah.
So I will choose a urban area for the my job posting. Because in the urban area, I will learn new things because of the, there is a good quality of work as compared to rural area banking. And also if I get stuck in any process, then I can take help of my senior in the urban area. And there should be not any language barrier, because if I go to the any rural area, there is a language barrier between me and the customers. So in the urban area, there is an English, a common language. So I think I will join the urban area for my posting.
First class, Vidaya.
Hello, sir.
Yeah, yes, please, quick, quick, quick.
Sir, may I speak?
Yeah. Manisha, okay, speak, speak.
Sir, in this situation, I will prefer urban posting because I was, I was born and brought up in the city. So I am familiar, more familiar with city affairs, I am able to manage things more efficiently than the rural one. Also, I would be getting more knowledge and learning opportunities that would help me in my career growth, thank you.
Very good, Swapnil, because you have interview tomorrow, please, Swapnil, yeah. Come.
Hello.
Come, come.
I spoke, I wanted to ask one question, is locker facilities available in the rural banks?
Rocker facility may not be there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Because I want.
Not fully, yeah, next, Vidaya, quickly, one minute twenty, yeah.
According to my perception, I would choose rural posting because I am too living in a rural village. Most of the people may be illiterate and not aware of digital system, so I can help them and make understand the use of that. Communicate and satisfy the customers' need, also rural area will be peace and not much rush in the activities.
Peaceful, peaceful, not peace, peaceful, yeah, very good. So thank you so much, time is over and please come for ten thirty session, maybe we will discuss some other points also. Okay, Aswati, there is no time, that's the thing, please come at ten thirty and.
Okay, sir, okay.
Thank you so much, best wishes, I expected people to come who have attended the interview today, but nobody has come. It's okay, doesn't matter, we will go ahead with ten thirty session as usual, best wishes, bye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, bye bye.
Thank you, sir.